Well now called again the August 22nd, 2022 Board of Trustees regular call meeting to order. Entertainer motion for adoption of the agenda.
Hello.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move in second for adoption of the agendas. Are there any questions in relation to the agenda? Hearing none. We ask that you please cast your vote. Dr. Frasier has not, she was on previously but has not joined back yet. Let the record reflect Ms. Coakley would not be here today. No, Ms. Morris will be joining. That motion carries. Item 1A is approval of minutes. Is there a motion?
Come here. Second.
Probably move by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Green. Are there any questions in reference to approval of the minutes? Hearing none. We ask that you please cast your vote. And that motion passes. Item 1D is moment of silence and pledge of allegiance to the flag. Please just pause for a moment. May I ask that you please stand for a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands limitation under the law in its justice, liberty and justice from.
Okay, we entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Come here.
Moved by Ms. Darby.
Second.
Second by Ms. Eric. Are there any questions in reference to going into executive session? Hearing none, board members, we will convene into the conference rooms so that everyone can remain present here while we convene for a moment. We'll be back very gracefully.
All right, we will now reconvene back into open session. At this time, I will have special recognition. Mr. Barrow.
Please walk up to the presentation here in a second.
You want to have her come up to the front, Mr. Barrow.
There's no way for her to get up.
All right. This afternoon, we'd like to recognize our Director of Nursing Services, Ellen Nitz. Ellen was named the 2022 South Carolina School Nurse Association's School Nurse Administrator of the Year. That was earlier this summer. The purpose of the award is to recognize school nurses and nurse administrators in school nursing practice. As noted by the association, Ms. Nitz exemplifies the best of school nursing in South Carolina, and your students, faculty, and families are fortunate to have you here in the community. We are indeed fortunate to have Ellen on our team. During the COVID-19 pandemic, Ellen's leadership and management has been instrumental in the district being able to maintain in-person learning. Her transparent communication with school administrators, nurses, and families about COVID-19 changes and new procedures alleviated fears and allowed the district to continue to successfully educate students. By establishing partnerships with local medical providers, Ellen led the effort to vaccinate more than 11,500 students during the school year. Under her steady leadership, we identified 15,550 close contacts and processed 9,000 COVID-19 positive cases during that same year. By establishing convenient contracted testing program, she not only allowed school nurses to focus on other health issues, but resulted in the district being able to successfully transition from the test-to-stay program, which allowed asymptomatic close contacts to remain in school. Additionally, Ellen established CCSD as the first district in the nation with the vaccination for children program, which has now provided children with nearly 900 immunizations. All in all, Ellen has provided the most noteworthy accomplishments and is deserving of the recognition of the South Carolina Nurse Administrator of the Year, and we'd like to thank her for all that she's done for the safety of our children and faculty.
Hey Jeff, can we get her a photo with her family?
Yeah, that's great.
Can we have Sully take that?
Yeah.
Probably a little bit better than the soul.
Yeah.
Well, this is three of the five. The other two are out. Yeah, we all look here real quick. Here we go. Ready? One, two, three.
Good job. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, Board of Directors. Thank you for this recognition opportunity. Last year, Charleston County School District and the Charleston County Department of Public Safety came together with a goal of empowering our youth in the domain of public safety. And out of it came a two-year paid internship program between the Charleston County School District, the Charleston County 911 Dispatch, as well as the Charleston County EMS. This paid internship provided our students with on-the-job training, high school credit towards graduation, and an opportunity to earn nationally-recognized industry certification and credentialing. These seniors that you see in front of you last this past summer worked all summer long, all day for weeks, four to six weeks. They will continue to work during this school year. After they graduate, they will then do post-graduation training, additional on-the-job training, eventually be eligible for fast-track employment. From cradle to grave, this has been the epitome of a partnership where groups of folks from multiple agencies came together with the goal to provide access to such a rewarding career field and opportunity to change lives and to transform entire communities. Before I turn it over to Supervisor Veronica Ross, I just want to say thank you so much to the Board of Directors, to the CCSD leadership, to 911 Dispatch Deputy County Administrator, Mr. Eric Watson, and his team for this wonderful opportunity. And of course, about these kids, check this out. These kids had a paid high school credit bearing, industry-recognized certification bearing, resume building, college application-worthy internship experience. Talk about a competitive advantage. Without further ado, Ms. Veronica Ross.
Thank you, Rich. Thank you, everyone. A special thank you to DCA Watson for his vision of the program, also to the Charleston County Council and the school district. Just to give you an overview of what the students did this year. So the students in the 911 class received their certificate for the Emergency Telecommunications Certification. That's a certification course from the International Academies of Emergency Dispatch. It is recognized internationally. They attended training for soft skills, life skills, and also winning at applying for job interviews, learning how to budget and write their resume. We're continuing to provide them training throughout the school year. And then for the EMS side, they reviewed knowledge of how EMS works, what an EMT does. They received their certification in CPR and first aid. They worked together and attended training to learn about stop-the-bleed, medical trauma, anatomy, and physiology, as well as airway assessments. We'll continue one month, I said, or one day a month through the school year with them, and then they'll return after they graduate to be fast-tracked for employment. Thank you again very much, and thank you, students, for participating.
If we come together, maybe the gentleman is going to get the client, so. Does he want to be in the program? Yeah. Yeah, hold it right this way, please, and hold it.
All right, item 6A, is there a motion?
Yep, I've got a motion.
Okay.
Hold on one second. All right. I recommend that the board uphold number 29, number 30, and number 38, and that we overturn number 31, number 32, number 33, number 34, number 35, number 36, 37, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, and 44.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Coates. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Dr. Frazier, how do you vote? Is Dr. Frazier still on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Waters?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Item 6B, is there a motion?
Move to approve. I'm sorry, move to approve, homeschool application is presented.
Moved by Ms. Coates, second by Ms. Darby. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Dr. Frazier, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Waters, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Got that motion carries. Item 56C, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to uphold the expulsion, ask the superintendent to review service options.
Is there a second? Moved by Ms. Hederick, second by Ms. Darby. Are there any questions in reference to item 6C? Dr. French.
I have a question about the language on the motion. I don't know if we should use the word uphold, because that's not what we were presented with.
We have a parliamentarian that can weigh in on that.
So just one second. So the motion was made in second. So is there a question in reference to the motion of the word uphold being used? But there's a motion on the floor.
I think uphold the expulsion, but by services is what you're trying to do.
Is that clarifying for you to the motion?
I guess I just didn't know what we're upholding, since we are just delivering the expulsion. We were delivered a deferral. We were not delivered a decision on the expulsion.
If you wanted to get technical, Dwayne, I guess it could be we could uphold the expulsion request, because we are in fact ruling on the district's request. Whether it flowed through the constituent board or not is still what we're doing.
We can make that friendly amendment.
If that will get us home before midnight.
That's a friendly amendment.
Thank you.
Can you restate it for Julie, please?
Got it. Okay.
You got it? Yeah, just for clarification, just for clarification. So there was a motion and it was a second. However, after further discussion, there's a friendly amendment that was added to the motion. So before we cast our vote, can we get a clarification on exact motion that's going to be presented?
Uphold the expulsion request and ask the superintendent to review service options.
Okay, that's it. All right, so everyone has agreement to the motion that was just made in a second. All right, is there any further questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Dr. Frazier, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Waters, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes. Item 6D, is there a motion?
I move that we allow the student to attend the early college high school tuition-free for the 22-23 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Coates, second by Ms. Hederick. Are there any questions in reference to motion item 6D? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Dr. Frazier, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Waters, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, that item passes. Item 7A is public comments. Ms. Darby.
Thank you. We have two public in-person comments for today. We have two minutes on the board. The first person is, I think it's Onethia Washington. Join us right at there at the mic.
Good afternoon, everyone. There is a large academic achievement gap between students of color and white students. At every school board meeting, discussion and practices to eliminate that gap should be the top priority. We know that there is an enormous gap. Our children should not wait any longer. Parents, guardians, want a plan and action. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, we have Frances Baylock. Nope, okay. All right, then we also have. All right, then we also have some email comments that y'all all got in your school board email account. So take a look at those, please.
All right, thank you, Ms. Darby. Item 8A is the report from the Ad-Hoc Committee on Student Outcome Governance. Ms. Hederick?
Yes, so we are progressing nicely in the timeline. Mr. Kennedy, in the last committee, the whole meeting presented some draft goals for the board to review. The next step in our timeline is to have community conversations around our goals and guardrails. The board will be getting trained on that this Friday at 11 o'clock. That meeting will be public and live streamed. And what you would look for after that is a series of meetings where the board, actually two members of the board would be going out in the community to present on these goals, getting input from the community if those are the goals that we want to move forward with in alignment with Mr. Kennedy and his team. So we will be putting that on the website. There'll be surveys that go out if you cannot attend the public meetings, but there'll be a full list of the board community engagement sessions during the month of September. Any questions on that? Or Dr. French, do you have anything to add?
I would just add that in addition to the goals, we'll be using that feedback to help set guardrails as well, and that's basically things that we would be out of bounds.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to just say thank you to Ms. Hederick and Ms. Waters and Dr. French in leading this effort and keeping us on on the times schedule for this piece. Thank you for the great work. All right, item 8B.
So we have a recommendation for an AP Environmental Science textbook. This didn't come with the other science recommendations because the state had not approved their full instructional materials list. This one got added in May, and so we then commenced the process that we follow according to policy of having the teachers who teach environmental science have the opportunity to review the materials. We made them available for the public, for parents, for community members. And so the recommendation is to use the Cengage AP Environmental Science. This is really important because all AP syllabi must be approved by the College Board, and all the instructional materials on the syllabus must also be approved by the College Board. And our previous AP Environmental Science textbook was out of date, and it was no longer going to be approved by the College Board. So that's why we're bringing the recommendation today. If you all approve that, then we'll be able to open up the ordering for the schools to go ahead and order their textbooks so they can get those in use for students.
So Ms. Woody, at one point, I remember there was some talk about a science kit that was going to cost this extra amount of money. Is this something in addition, or is that something completely separate?
So the science kits are for our elementary and middle school science classrooms. We just got our district allocation from the state for science kit refurbishment.
Okay.
It's quite sizable, so we think we'll be able to proceed with purchasing those for elementary classrooms. This is for our high school advanced placement environmental science course.
All right. Are there any questions?
I'd like to make a motion to improve the instructional materials recommended for use in the Charleston County School District by the Textbook Selection Committee for the subjects in the attached recommendation and justification documents.
So moved.
All right, moved by Ms. Hederick, second by Ms. Darby. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Dr. Frazier, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Waters, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Just saying. All right, that item passes. Item 9A, Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, sir. So we have a PowerPoint that's coming up. A very brief overview of school opening last week. As you know, school opened on Wednesday, August 17th, and I would say that we had a successful opening. We have some factual data that we'd like to present. We have three officers that would do that. We'll start with Ms. Anita Huggins, which she would handle the academics. And then Mr. Bill Briggman will give an update on the data associated with human resources. And then Mr. Jeff Borey will give us an update on operations.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, Reverend Dr. Mack, board members. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you some of the wonderful things we saw in schools last week. I'm excited to share with you that all members of our staff in both the Chief Academic Office and the Chief of Schools Office were out in schools, along with many other offices represented here today to support schools opening Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. We saw many, many great things and promising things as we begin the new school year. We'll give you just a few big picture items that we saw as we started walkthroughs last week. First and foremost, we saw students who were actively engaged in building community and talking with teachers about shared expectations, not only for behavior, but also for academic performance. For us as educators, that was very promising to see students buying in to what their teachers shared with them about expectations and also sharing some of their own thoughts about their expectations for themselves and their expectations for their peers. We find and research tells us that when students have that ownership in the classroom, it makes learning so much more meaningful for them as the year progresses and helps them to better interact with their peers, which we know also aids greatly in student achievement. Secondly, in all the schools in which we visited, or Mr. Kennedy visited with Mr. Borey and me and other key members of staff, we visited two places in all schools. One was the media center, and one was the school cafeteria, which was very, very enjoyable for us. What we saw in our media centers, and some, we already had students the first few days in the media center, the very first day, in fact, Mr. Kennedy, you'll remember, checking out books, asking teachers about books, media specialists about books. Some literally jumped up and down, telling us about the new books that they chose. And so for us, and I know for you, as you share our goals to improve literacy across the district, that was very exciting, and it happened across the district, not in any subset of schools or any one district. So we were thrilled to see students engaged. And I know Mr. Borey will speak a little more about our cafeterias, all of our cafeteria managers, and those workers were thrilled to see Mr. Kennedy and team members there, and were anxious and ready to serve students. Third, we even saw, which is hard to believe, the first few days, because teachers are so overwhelmed with the administrative task with which they're given, just to get students in, to get them on roles, to make sure they have their needed materials and supplies. We saw rollout of some of our key core curricula, which was also very exciting and inspiring for us as we were in classrooms. And Ms. Simmons reported some of the same in the school visits she and Dr. Dixon did last week. Lastly, just to give you a quick overview, our teams are monitoring attendance in our schools. We are, again, delighted that for the first time in a couple of years, we had a more normal start than ever before, and our attendance did exceed our expectations. Ms. Williams's team is working on those numbers for us now, but in the interim. Dr. Dixon and the school principals and the associate superintendents, many of them are here tonight, are working closely with families who haven't yet shown up to ensure that we're filling the gaps and that we know where kids and families are, and if they need extra support, that we're able to offer wraparound services to them. So that's all from the academic and school side of the house right now. I'll pass it over, I think. Mr. Briggman, to you.
Yes, thank you, Anita. So I'm definitely excited to say we opened the school year with 34 vacancies in our classrooms for classroom teachers. I say that to say that that's probably the largest number I've seen in my 20 years or so. But this was a very difficult recruitment season. I believe we led the low country when it comes to neighboring districts as far as filling our vacancies. So we are continuing to fill vacancies, not just with the first day students come back. It's an ongoing process. I will tell you that we onboarded, when I say onboarded, between transfers and new hires, about 778 teachers. That includes classroom teachers and any type of instructional support that's in the building. This slide shows 508, so 508 were the actual classroom teachers. But the additional numbers I mentioned are, there's about 77 other types of positions, like a guidance counselor or media specialist, and about 193 transfers. So every year, we obviously have teachers that see a position posted in a school and move forward with some type of transfer, which involves an interview as well. Also, for substitutes, it was three days of subs for teachers who may be called out. We had a 97% fill rate, which is very high. I don't have the actual number of how many teachers were out, but we were staffed when it comes to substitute teachers, over 1,000 in our sub database. So I'm excited to report that. Pathways to teaching, I wanted to highlight a few things here. As many of you have heard me talk about the various pathways where we're growing our own teachers. The first one I'll mention is the Men of Charleston Teach, which is our recruitment program for more male teachers of color in our elementary schools. We opened the school year with 12 men of Charleston teachers in our classrooms as part of a residency model. There are six additional male teachers who are going through the process. So we will continue to add teachers to the program throughout the school year up until March is the way it's designed. We have a very ambitious goal of trying to have 20 each year for the next three years for a total of 60 elementary teachers. The next category I'll mention is the Teacher Assistant Teacher Program, and this has a couple of different pathways. We currently have nine teacher assistants that are going through this process. Four started the school year as a teacher. The other five, we're still continuing to work with, Praxis and some other pieces as far as their certification goes. And to expand on that, we have cohorts as well, where we have 18 classified employees that are going through a process to get a bachelor's degree. It's a couple of years out before they will finish, so they're really in cohort one. In cohort two, we have 12 classified employees going through the second cohort, and they'll finish probably in about three years. And then one thing that we added at the end of the school year, as Reverend Mack knows about, the Teach Local group at our early college high school. We had a brainstorming session in my HR department to talk about the number of high school students that maybe are not exposed to teaching like our early college students have been. So we reached out to principals across the district, our high school principals, and we have five high school students that have signed on as teacher assistants. They all happen to be female African-American teachers, so we're excited to have them on board. They're starting as teacher assistants. They're all 18 years old, and they're going through a bachelor's program. So that's a new initiative that started in June, so we moved very quickly on that. It's something we plan to add to our portfolio as we continue to grow our own. And then Teach Charleston, as many of you have heard me talk about Teach Charleston, we have 52 fellows this year in the Teach Charleston program. Thank you. I think Mr. Borey is next.
Thank you, Mr. Briggman. So I'm going to give you a quick snapshot of where we stand on a couple of our key programs, and I can just say overall, if the start of the school year is based on the number of emails that I received, this is the best year we've had in eight years. That's not to say I don't get any emails, but from a complaint perspective. So first up, just a couple of COVID data points. We are tracking school totals on a weekly basis. We updated the spreadsheet and put that on our website for the first time today. That covered the three days of school last week. We averaged just under 20 cases per day last week. I know our number of cases is up today. We'll continue to closely track those. Those are all self-reported from those that are COVID positive. On the transportation front, we actually were prepared to start the year with more than 100% of the number of drivers that we needed. Over the course of the two weeks before school started, it looked like we had some drivers find better positions, which is hard to imagine in some ways, because the starting salary for drivers is over $21 an hour plus signing bonuses. But nonetheless, we did lose drivers between training and when they came to pick up their buses. So we started out the year at 95% staffing, and that did not include callouts. So if we had individual callouts sick, the number would have resulted in less than 95% manning. Over the past four days, that number has gone up, and we're back up to 98% staffing. And there are drivers in the pipeline being trained as we speak. Most of the problems we experienced were in District 2, Mount Pleasant area. We're also right now evaluating potential overcrowding. If we have overcrowding, we look at moving kids to a different route or setting up an additional route. And we're also looking at implementing bus stop requests that have come in over the past several weeks. Moving into nutrition services, we successfully overcame supply chain shortages, which we had at the end of last year as well. We're expecting that to continue into October. Mr. Campbell and his team are doing a fantastic job with getting food into the schools, however, and we didn't have any glitches with that in the end. As you may recall, we do not have free lunch for all of our students this year, and that has resulted in a drop in participation. The team is working hard to bring that up. Obviously, the more lunches that we serve, the better off we are financially. We'll continue to work on that as the year progresses, and we are managing just minor labor shortages. We were 91% staffed, and we've got 19 individuals in the pipeline. Right now, we have 374 billets out of 410 billets on the book. So again, over 90% manned as we speak right now. My next slide just captures some of the work that was done by facilities management this summer, and I'm not going to read this list to you. But if you'll note, looking at this, we had several projects in the final phase. We phased a number of our higher volume projects, ones that take a lot of time and a lot of effort. Over the course of several summers, we were in the final phase of North Charleston High, Mini Hughes, and Frierson, three big projects. We installed two new playgrounds. We did flooring at seven schools. And we did summer cleaning across the equivalent of the district of 5,000 homes. If you take a 2,000 square foot home, we cleaned 5,000 homes this past summer. So we're truly proud with what facility management did over the course of the last three months. That concludes the out slides.
Thank you all very much. And Reverend Mack, that concludes the update. What questions do y'all have?
Okay. Are there any questions from board members? Ms. Coates?
Just a few. So what's our percentage for attendance right now? Do we have any idea? I mean, within 10%, are we above 90?
Mr. Kennedy, you want to?
Yeah, so we talked about that this afternoon, Ms. Coates. And so in terms of capturing the students in Power School, there's a lag. And so what we will do, we will provide the board an update through the board briefing this week, later this week.
Okay. And then Bill, in here it says that the Men of Charleston Teach residents are working in classrooms. You referenced 12. Are they working as teachers?
Yes, ma'am, they are.
So we have, they are, they're the teacher of the classroom?
They are. It's a residence model for their first year, so they are partnered with a experience.
So they're still in the partnership phase?
For one year.
And then next year, there'll be these 12, that's awesome. And the same, so what do the 52 fellows in the Teach Charleston do? Are they also in some sort of shadowing model or?
No, ma'am, that's an alternative route certification program. So if they meet the qualifications they have, they've gone through our summer training, and they are the certified teacher of record in the classroom right now.
I think, is this the first year you've really put teachers into the school, into the classroom, teaching kids from these programs?
This is the largest number of Teach Charleston.
Thought that was.
So we've had, this is similar to the PACE program, but it has more support and mentoring.
It's just nice to see that those plans have finally shown up with people standing at the front of the classroom delivering education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coates. Thank you, Mr. Briggman. All right, item 10A.
Reverend Mack, my hand was up.
Sorry, Ms. Waters?
No problem. It's silent. I do have a question for Mr. Briggman around the teachers of color, the Men of Color piece. With my non-HR ears, the number 20 as a goal just seems quite low. Can you talk about why the goal is 20, given the disparity in the number of black male teachers in classrooms?
Sure. The number 20, our team, April Butler, leads our team in the HR department, and we landed on that simply because of the complexity, as you may know, through Teach for America, of recruiting alternative route certification teachers. It's not the same as going to a teacher-led program where they're graduates at a career fair that are looking for jobs in school districts. So it's a lot more cultivating of candidates and finding candidates that have the passion to teach, but maybe majored in another area.
Okay, I'm interested in, that makes sense. I'm interested in the requirements, because I know, I mean, of course, through my work with TFA, I often feel like we could probably get a lot more if the requirements were a little bit different. And I don't know what they are, but maybe we can take. And I don't know what they are, but and maybe we can take it offline, but I'm just interested in knowing what the requirements are. And when I say that, I don't mean to to suggest that we water it down, but I know for instance, you know, there just may be some qualifying factors that would be nice to have, but not absolutely necessary when it comes to getting a teacher in the classroom who's passionate, that passion and the ability to learn is is going to be, you know, much more important, for instance, than a GPA, right? And so I'm just wondering, you know, what that looks like.
I can, I'll be glad to send that in a board update. We work directly with the University of South Carolina with this program and Voorhees. So there are requirements for for USC, a little different than our Teach Charleston program, which would have a different GPA. So I'll be glad to provide all that in a board update.
Awesome, thank you.
And so, Bill, that is, is it twenty per year for over three-year program?
Yes, sir, it's S R funded. It's twenty per year over the three years for a goal of sixty.
All right, thank you. All right, item ten A. I'm sorry. Dr. French, you had a question in reference to the update? Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Barrowe, I just wondered where we are on the additions for Stoll and Lucy Beckham. The modular additions, I think.
Yes, ma'am. So the additions for Stoll is is planned for opening in mid-September. And the addition at Lucy Beckham is expected to be at the end of September, first of October, actually. And both both schools are under projection right now. Both schools actual enrollment is under projection, so we're 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 good with that until we get these up and running. But that that makes things a little bit easier.
Okay, are there any other questions in reference to the updates? Okay, all right, item ten A.
There are no questions. Chair, I'm motion to adopt the resolution approving the issuance of the tax anticipation note to meet cash to meet cash flow requirements. Second.
Moved by Ms. Green, second by Ms. Darby. Are there any questions in reference to item ten A? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Dr. Frazier, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Waters, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Got a motion passes. Item ten B, is there a motion?
Chairman, I motion to approve the reallocation of funds as shown on the attached resolution.
Second.
Okay, move by Ms. Green, second by Ms. Coats. Are there any questions in reference to item ten B? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Dr. Frazier, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Waters, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, that motion passes. Item ten C is the Capitol Projects Report, June twenty twenty-two, listed as information. Are there any questions in reference to the report? Hearing none, we move the item eleven A, Policy ADD.
I move to remove Policy ADD from the policy manual.
Move by Dr. French, second by Ms. Darby. Are there any questions in reference to item eleven A? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Dr. Frazier, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Waters, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Green? Thank you, Ms. Green. That item passes. Item eleven B, Policy A E B B A.
I move to accept changes to Policy E B B A with Policies J L C C and G B G A, referring to Policy E B B A for more information to approve the second reading.
Second.
Move by Dr. French, second by Ms. Darby. Are there any questions in reference to item eleven B? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Dr. Frazier, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Waters, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Okay, that item passes. Item twelve A. All right, that's on the consent agenda item for first reading. All right. Okay, item thirteen A is the upcoming meeting. The committee hold will be on September the twelfth. And the regular board meeting will be scheduled on September twenty-second. Entertainer motion for adjournment?
So moved.
So moved.
September twenty-sixth, correct. This meeting is officially adjourned.